Okay, we're ready to start.
The flag is to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in law.
For the tutorials, if you're interested.
Just a reminder, we're recording, so try to stay away.
Our next upcoming Select Board meeting is May 19th, here at the Fire Hall. What is your pleasure?
I move adoption of the consent agenda.
Second favor.
Do we have any?
Do we have any Select Board comments and answers?
No.
Right along. Business item number one, comprehensive plan survey.
Yes, you have a copy of the survey in your packet that the comprehensive plan committee would like to move forward with. It will be available online, and hard copies will also be available, so people have their choice of how to complete it. So we're hitting our target date of having it out in the month of May, which is great. And if you approve, just need a motion to release it to the public as presented.
I'm sorry, I have a question. Statement number eight. Instead of saying what you would like least about living in West Bath, how about what would you like to improve about living in West Bath? That seems very negative.
Is this what the comprehensive committee proposed?
Yes, that's what we proposed as a survey.
I move that we accept and promote the comprehensive plan survey as approved by the comprehensive plan committee. I just have one question. Number nine, is that? It doesn't sound like a...
What's number nine? I didn't bring a copy.
Town service of road maintenance adequate? Yes or no? Explain.
Somebody seemed to have a negative connotation to them.
Well, it's yes or no. Do you think the town's road services are adequate? And there's also, we'll replace your comments if you want to add a statement.
I'm just asking because that sounds confusing to me because I can't remember.
So that's what they all read through, voted on, and thought that'd be a good way to get the word out there.
I'm not opposed to having these statements in there. I just don't think you might want to soften the approach on some of them. Like, instead of what do you like least about West Bath? What would you like to improve in West Bath?
Well, I guess you just want to know. I'm sure people have some negative feelings about something. So we just ask them, what is your least?
What's the best, what's the least?
Yeah. Be honest with you. Anybody can go back and forth in wording for forever. And we did, and this is what we came up with.
When I looked at that, I'm just trying to figure out what you mean. Does it mean plowing? Do they mean?
Anything.
What is the road?
Anything. Whether it's plowing, maintenance, whatever. And there's no way we're going to satisfy anybody with the wording.
I'm just trying to put a more positive spin on it. It seems negative.
We didn't take it too negative. We just asked people what they least care for.
It's not a deal breaker for me. It says...
There wasn't a second.
There wasn't. So there's a motion on the floor. I second it. All in favor? All opposed?
Thank you.
Business item two, Saginaw County Hazard Litigation Plan Adoption.
Okay. All of the counties in the state are required to update their hazard litigation plans every five years. Saginaw County's previous litigation plan was done in 2016, so they've updated the plan and they're on target for... 2021 is when they completed it. It addresses life safety, natural resources, and infrastructure safety during natural disasters. So this has been forwarded to FEMA and has been reviewed. And they had some time for public comment, so they received whatever public comment was available on their draft plan. And now each town in Saginaw County is required to adopt it.
Do you have the appendix A that they're representing?
I emailed it to you. I don't have it with me.
I thought that the plan was extremely thorough. I note that John Bean, who is our emergency contact person, was one of the workers. And I would move that we adopt that multi-jurisdictional plan as proposed by the Saginaw County emergency folk. Do we have a motion to the second? In all honesty, I cannot. I have not reviewed it.
I have neither.
We have time to wait until...
I want to look at the appendix A before I say anything.
Yeah. I'd rather not print everything out because it's quite lengthy. So if you can review it.
Well, then I withdraw the motion and move that we table this for the next meeting. Thank you, Madam. I second that. All in favor? All opposed? Item three, Select Board's contingency disbursement request. The amount of $3,200 payable to Reno's excavation was approved and the $12,1620,001 warrant for removal of being in vote. The treasurer would like the Select Board to approve taking the funds from the contingency since the expense was unanticipated.
I move that we authorize the payment from the Select Board contingency fund.
How much do we have in there right now?
The full amount, $10,000. I think it was $10,000. But we haven't expended any other funds.
We already approved the bill, so we might as well pay for it. Do we have a motion to the second? I'm going to excuse myself only because it's a relation and I think it's the best thing for me to do.
Versus, is there... Why not take it just out of the regular budgeting?
Because we don't have appropriate and regular budget. That's why Julie needs permission to take it from contingency. It was an unanticipated expense.
Right.
I knew it before it went down. All in favor? Attorney General's report.
Okay, we have a few things tonight. We received an additional application for membership to the broadband task force for Michelle Russ, who is recently retired and able to serve. I have an appointment form for her.
She's been sitting on it unofficially since she's making it official.
Yeah, she's been attending meetings, but she has not been able to participate. If you'd like to review her application, I have it with me. And I also have the appointment form if you'd like to sign.
I will let you sign it this evening because you've already been participating.
We have to approve it.
I agree that we approve her application. All signed.
All in favor?
For the motion, I'm sorry. Can I just get her name?
Michelle Russ.
Two L's?
Okay. On the town meeting warrant that you approved at your last meeting, there was a slight change in formatting, which makes it so that we need to sign it again. So I have an updated copy that's stated for today.
What was the format change?
It was just it wasn't lined up correctly. Carly needs it perfect.
Needs to line up. I only got the last page, and then when I received the other pages, it didn't line up.
Well...
Sue, it's out of line then.
Yes, completely out of line.
I think it's probably we who are out of line. Carly's them.
You have updated planning board applications before you. Not sure if you want to go ahead and deal with them tonight if they're not presented, or if you want to table that for time review.
The only change is that at the previous town meeting, we changed the timeline that requests have to be made 15 days prior, and the current form says 12 days prior. Other than that, everything remains the same.
Well, that makes it simpler then. Well, I move that we approve the amended application forms for the planning board business. Seconded. All approve that?
And that's all I have to do.
Future agenda items?
I'd like to bring back up the welcoming new business to West Bath certificates. I'd like an appreciation for them coming to the town.
What's the date of the next meeting?
I don't have the calendar.
19th.
But there is also the informational session next Thursday as well.
I should also note that we are not going to have a town report this year ahead of town meeting. The audit is not completed. I just don't want people to be surprised by that. We can make many, many copies in the morning, have that available, and any backup information that people might want, but the town report will not be available this year. Emily has had to apply for extensions from the Department of Education, I think twice now. And they're going to allow her to extend it one more time if necessary. But the auditors throughout the state are so far behind that a lot of towns are having to deal with this right now.
Yes, I'm trying to be a nonprofit organization, trying to get a wallet.
Yeah. So it's a little uncomfortable going into a town meeting without all of the post-audit information, but that's where we find ourselves this year.
So just to get back to Suzanne's, we'll put that on the next agenda.
I have it written down.
And I'm wondering, can we have at least a draft plan so we can make an official policy about how things are presented from the floor and discussed by the Select Board? So that we have adequate time for preparation?
Sure.
Anything else, Madam?
I think that's all I can remember that I wanted to talk about.
I'm good.
So we'll go down to the business items. Assessors, application for abatement, Jay Parris, Phyllis Parris, tax map R-06, lot 42A, and tax map R-06, lot 42C. Okay. And I am remembering that it's 42A that was the one that our assessing agent said should be recommended that it be given, right?
So I guess I'll summarize because after the last meeting, Christine went on vacation, and I touched base with Ron because we never had the actual abatement request assigned. And at the last meeting, we talked about one abatement request, but when Ron pulled his files, they actually had submitted two. One for the combining of the lots and the other for the discrepancy in the acreage. So there are two separate abatement requests, one for acreage and one for combining the lots.
So it's 42A that was about the acreage? It says here on that...
One of the things I brought with me, if you don't have them in front of you, to substantiate the fact that we sold 18.5 acres to Sabano LLC.
Okay.
I brought a copy of the settlement statement. And also, if you look, I brought a copy of the bill to Sabano LLC for 18.5 acres. So prior to 2071, our bill for 42A comprised our homestead lot where our house was, our west lot to the other side of Fayetteville, and to the southland, south of Sabano Road. And all the land south of Sabano Road, 18.54 acres, was sold to Sabano LLC. So therefore, our assessed acreage should be reduced by 18.54 acres.
Is that the $1,158 that you requested?
Yes, it is 42A.
The amount of the abatement, and I don't know to what extent you folks checked it, but I used all the data on the tax cards and came up with what the cost is per acre outside of the homestead acre. And I think I gave you, I have a copy here, of all my calculations. And it's pretty much in the favor of the town. You know, we're not claiming anything significant like the amount of money that Sabano LLC is requesting.
I move that we approve the abatement for map R-06, 42A, account R-1314, as presented to us this evening.
I get a dollar on the negative side.
It's $1,158.11. I'll give this to you.
I have a copy of the opposite.
Okay, let's just take that one on its own for now. So... What we need from you tonight is to sign...
Well, we need a seconded.
I'll go ahead and myself.
All in favor? Have a question? Why wouldn't the tax assessor come up with the figures?
He did. He did. He's in agreement.
Oh, okay.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so that piece was approved.
Yes.
So the signing approval, sign on the...
This is 42A. So this is the original request, so sign that one. And then this is the form that Ron created. So this one should also be assigned on the first page and then at the top of the second page.
So should we fill in, it says the amount?
No.
Increase that you are to sign a blank valuation?
It's on the front.
It's on the front.
Trying to be Joseph Dollar, am I here too bad?
In the written form. That's only if it's denied on the back.
No, for the allowed, it says a dollar amount. It's blank.
Well, it's on the front of the form, so it's okay.
Julie noted saying that I'm signing a document claiming that the money is on the front.
They do pay attention to it, yes.
I can do that. 2.8. You said it shouldn't be a blank dollar value.
Yeah, that should be filled in.
It should be filled in. I think you should put 1158 there. 11. So I'm going to... Both pages?
Yes. On the front page and then the top of the second page.
Okay, next one. Next one is lot 42C.
42C is the one that you voted at the last meeting to have the Board of Assessment review.
We have to deny it to send it to the...
Yeah, so what we need is a motion to deny the abatement. I have a copy of the original statement.
Can we respond? May I ask a question? Can we understand or request for a payment?
Basically, what you just agreed to is to reduce 42A to 16.9 acres, at which point the case is almost closed because 42C is, you know, a... Has no meaning because...
It's part of the acreage.
Say what?
It's part of the acreage.
42A is our homestead lot and our west lot. And you have just passed an abatement which reduces our acreage of 42A to 16.9 acres. Therefore, the existence of 42C has no meaning whatsoever.
There is no acreage for 42C. The creation of 42C creates land that does not exist. It is erroneous in many respects. Pleasure's born.
Okay, this is beyond anything I'm going to understand.
No, I think we can make math very simple.
Yeah, so does the Board understand?
Nope.
No.
No.
All right, Jay, can we just quickly go through the acreage very simply?
Well, can I? I'm just going to stop you. So there are two abatement requests. The first request, which they just approved, was for the error in the acreage. The second request is for the error in the separation of the lots because the lots are still considered to be two separate lots, and you're asking for them to be combined. So that's what the second request...
No, it was not.
They were never split apart. From 2006 onward, we always paid our tax bill for, that included our west lot.
But in 2021, they were divided, and that's what you are seeking to correct with this abatement request.
They were not divided because they never were. Because the tax bill for 2021 is 16.9 acres.
All right, so may I just ask Jay questions? Because I understand, I think I understand where you're coming from because you weren't convinced of this as he was. So in 2021, in part to that, how many acres will we tax on?
It was, what, 35.44?
When we sold the acreage to Sabano LLC, what should be acreage for us, regardless of how we owned it, but what did we then own?
We owned 16.9 because we subtracted the 18.54 from the 35.44. And that has just, that abatement has just been approved.
Right, stop there. Don't confuse this. So if we go to the tax bills as currently shown, we're paying for the 16...
Nine.
Nine acres, which we've always left home, homestead, et cetera, inclusive of our west lot, which has been erroneously separated off. If you separate off the lot, as has been done, and make a 3-point, some small fraction of an acre, that would be additive to the 16.9 acres.
That is precisely the question. Not the question that's...
So what does the tax card say on it right now?
The tax, our current tax card?
You had it due?
It's 35.44 because the current tax card was done before we sold the land to Sabano LLC.
The question is, is the remaining land intersected by a public road? That is my understanding of what the essential question is.
The, from 2006...
Is that the essential question?
There should have been a separate lot too.
And that was, and that was the question, and that was the reason that we asked to have this referred to the Assessment Review Board.
May I see some clarification here? On what basis can anyone, the assessor, the appraiser, or whomever, create a separate lot? On what basis can someone divide our land without so much as consulting with us, advising us, or providing some rationale for it? How can this happen?
I think Ron needs to answer that.
Yeah, well, if you're looking for just now you of the property in itself.
No, I'm not. I'm asking how you separated this lot off, and you've answered that before, three different ways.
It's not contiguous with A.
Doesn't need to be.
Yes, it does.
Never was.
That was a mistake that was made. You ratified the mistake when you come across it. And I never come across it until they sold the other pieces across the road.
I'm sorry. We decided last time that this needed to go to the Board of Assessment Review. And I think that's where it needs to go.
But the problem is that what they're not asking. There's one parcel right now that has 16... But there, give me one second. There's one parcel that has 16.9 acres in it, which is the exact amount that it should be after the Sabano LLC purchased a piece of land. So there is no other abatement at this point of land. There's no land that needs to be...
So there's not still two lots?
There's two abatements.
Correct.
One asking for A and one asking for B.
The question is, is there two lots?
They're saying there's not. They're saying there is none. They're saying there's not. They're saying there is no determination.
Ron is saying that there is and so it goes to the Board of Assessment Review.
Okay, let me try something different so that maybe I can wrap my head around. 42A, the Board of Assessors just voted to grant the abatement.
Just what they asked for.
Yes, just what they asked for.
Yep.
So after that abatement is granted, how will... How will you go ahead and assess their property going forward? Are you going to assess it as one piece of land or two?
No, it will be two. It will be two because it's two separate lots.
But we just approved a one lot dispersment of 18.54 acres out of 35.44 acres. So in theory, there's no other land because we, based upon the paperwork that you submitted for us to sign tonight, has 16.9 acres as one parcel.
Which was just what he asked for.
But then, but then you sent it through as a one parcel tonight.
The one parcel is a separate...
The sole parcel is one parcel. The second parcel is the part, is the piece that was cut off.
There's no piece cut off though. In this, in this, this, this second abatement has no land attached to it.
What Suzanne's saying is that the total acreage for the two lots is included in the request under...
42A.
Under 42A. So because all the acreage is in this lot, there's no acreage left over to create the second lot.
Correct.
Does that sound... I'm not saying that's correct. I'm saying that's what they're saying.
That's how it was presented tonight.
Right.
That we just signed from paperwork, from the town hall for the abatement.
That's how the tax bill function.
So is there land on the other side of the public road?
That was sold.
That is still owned by the Parises?
By...
Yes, by the original owner.
No. No, everything on, not on the south side of the road was sold.
Okay, so there's no, so there's no other land.
Is there land in parcel 42C?
3.36 acres.
It can't be. We just put 16.9 acres in 42A.
Because it's a separate lot.
Yeah, we shouldn't have put 16.9 acres in 42A.
He's telling me how much land he's got. I can't figure it out.
Why not?
A, when, when, when he bought land from the east, he's telling me 16.93 acres. I give him the abatement for that.
But then there's no, now there's zero in lot 42C.
No, it's still 3.36.
There can't be. Then what's in 16.9 acres in 42A?
It don't matter. You would be going along with what they're saying. They shouldn't have been separated, but it was separated and I separated it. It shouldn't have separated a long while ago. It shows up on a map, two maps.
We just signed something.
I would like to counter that statement. And when we sold the land to Fagie in 2005, there was a broken arrow connecting our present homestead lot with our west land. And that broken arrow means that those are still one up. When we submitted documentation in terms of this, we submitted a Supreme Court ruling of... The tax assessor said that wasn't applicable because that was related to a subdivision. My wife is going to be a bit mad for me bringing this up. But the principle, if this is not handled here, that the Board of Assessors Review will have to deal with is the principle of amniadicta. And that essentially is the reason we submitted that subdivision ordinance. And that basically says that, or be it addict or, can suggest the interpretation of the law that has no bearing on the case at hand, which might be useful in future cases. And that may cite a number of cases, including our past president, Mr. Trump. So amniadicta has been around for a long time. If the town attorney was here, I'm certain she would be aware of that principle of sensei obiter dicta. And our attorney definitely was. And that's why he submitted that particular subdivision ruling from the main Supreme Court to support what happened in 2006. And we've been paying taxes on the west lot as part of 42A ever since 2006. And that came with 2021 tax bills.
Okay, let's try to break this down a little bit. The reason why the board voted last time to put this before the Board of Assessment Review is because...
There was gray area.
There was a lot of gray area.
We are not prepared to make a determination.
At your last meeting, you determined that it would all be, you know, that you would deny the 42A and 42C.
But we just approved 42A, so we shouldn't have...
Yes, that's why I'm breaking this down because we need to move forward with this. If... Okay, so you granted 42A tonight. You approved that.
That 16.9 acres is the problem.
Understood. So if you go ahead and deny 42C because you have to act on it because it was submitted as an abatement request and the Parises choose not to appeal that to the Board of Assessment Review, what that means is that Ron is going to commit an assessment that the Parises may not be comfortable with. So we may be going through the process again at a, at a much later time because commitment doesn't happen until, say, September. So I just want to make sure that everybody has a clear picture.
So by denying the 42C abatement, sending it to the Board of Assessors...
If they choose to appeal it to the Board of Assessors.
Well, it's, if he's gonna turn around and break land off of 16.9 acres and put it into 42C, I believe that's not what your intent is. Is that right, Parry's family?
Correct.
No, 42A has been since 2006.
So that, so that that needs to be resolved?
No, it doesn't.
And it says, yes, it does. Because it's gonna come up again. First of all, we have to deny it anyway because it's sitting in the law.
Right, we have to act on it. I won't say you have to deny it, but you have to act on it.
And, and...
Yeah.
You could have proven it.
One second, one second. It, it, this is, and this is the only way that our attorney can resolve this is in that format. Is that correct?
I, well...
The attorney advises the Board of Assessment Review. They're the ones that made the correction.
So, but also by... It's how, that's the only way the attorney can represent the Board of Assessors if it's done in...
Is that accurate?
With the Assessment Review.
There, she would be counseling the Board of Assessment Review, not the Board of Assessors.
That's how she would represent that decision.
Yes, yes.
Is through Assessment Review.
Correct.
That's the only way to get her into that forum.
Correct.
So I think it's, I think that it's, this should be resolved officially, one way or the other.
If we were to...
Excuse me, I'll use my hand for a while.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
I think I can clarify what is happening here. What Jay is saying is he owns 16.9 acres. You gave an abatement on that as all the one parcel. The way it is currently split, he only has 13.9 acres with his house and he has three acres on that separate lot. So what you've done is put that separate lot assessed as excess acreage, not as a separate lot. So we're talking like $10,000 value on that three acres versus what, a couple hundred thousand?
266,000, not a lot of company here.
On that three acres standing by itself.
Let me grab his, what he assessed for that.
She was saying 266,300.
Yeah, so you've just changed the value of those three acres from 260,000 to 10,000 or whatever.
So here's, I think what we're trying to determine is if the, the creation of a parcel was lawfully created because the owners of the parcel did not request it. I think that's, so that's where I think, I think it's best of the attorney because she's fluent in real estate law. Because we, we, it was, it was always there as one parcel until it just wasn't with no notice or anything. It was removed out of their parcel without a notice from the town, granting permission or, and there was no conversation. So whether that was lawfully done or not is not, I'm not prepared to make that determination. I, I think it needs to be resolved by our attorney. And the only way to do that is to send it, send it to Assessment.
If I'm hearing right, it sounds like Ron is saying there is and was two lots. It was corrected in '21 to make it two lots. But the 16.9 acres, Ron is stepping, they're saying, without being surveyed, that the main lot is 16.9 acres.
The total land.
There is, no. He's saying, if I'm reading it right and hearing it right, he's saying, he's accepting, the Parises are saying there's 16.9 acres on the main lot. Unless it's surveyed, we won't know for sure.
It hasn't been surveyed.
Well, this is what I'm hearing. He's also saying in his, that there's a second lot, 3.5, 3.3 acres, whatever it was, that exists right now is a second lot. So it's a 3.5 whatever plus a second, another lot of 16.9 whatever.
But it's that second lot that was created. We're trying to determine who has the authority to do that.
I'm not saying who created it, who authority. I'm just saying, that's what I'm talking about. We're talking about two separate lots, 3.3 or 3.5, whatever it is, and another 16.9. And the only resolver in my mind is, as you said, is gonna go to the Review Board.
I think the, it needs to go to the Review Board. It's beyond our scope as, as this board here, my position is. And I think to resolve it once and for all, as to how the land was dispersed into lots, should be resolved by our town attorney.
And to correct that one more time, the town attorney does not make a determination. She advises the Board of Assessment Review. They make the determination.
She will help make the determination with the Board of Assessment.
She will not help make it. She will advise the board. They will make the determination solely by themselves.
Based upon the attorney's knowledge input.
The Board of Assessment Review makes the decision.
I just want to be certain that the town attorney will not, if you proceed with the denial, the town attorney will not be supporting the denial. She will be looking for the true facts in the case.
Exactly.
She will be representing the Board of Assessment Review.
Well, we have, we have, are you not part of, or the head of the Board of Assessment Review? Thank you, sir. So you have two choices. You can go with the numbers and make our second abatement request go away. We can request it be rescinded, canceled, whatever the proper terminology is, and this whole problem goes away.
Until he sends a bill.
Yeah, we're gonna get a bill you don't like.
And we're gonna start this all over come commitment.
Because...
He's already stated he's gonna do that, so we...
The position that Ron has stated is that because there is a public road going between the small lot and your main lot, there are two lots.
No, there's no road there.
But he is saying that there was an error in your favor and he corrected it in the town's favor. As far as I'm, as far as I know, nobody has to have noticed when their tax bill changes.
Methuen may not?
When you're separating a lot, you should have...
When you have had a tax bill based upon certain assumptions since 2005.
It was wrong in 2000, after 2005. Everything was fine. When you had your house, you got your new house. You sold the one, the old house. And the taxing of the piece on the other side, that's where that subdivision come in. If it was a subdivision, you'd have two lots.
We've never had a subdivision, Ron. I'm wondering what you're talking about.
There you go. It wasn't subdivision in the first place. And not only that, but the lot across the street on the south side was always taxed with that on the north side.
I think we're giving the lovely ladies a headache.
I move that we deny the abatement and send it forward to Assessment Review.
I would like to put forward one thing.
I think we need to make sure that we don't send it to the Board of Assessment Review. It's subject to appeal. But the person who has applied for the abatement has to make the appeal. We don't appeal, something that we've denied.
You haven't denied it yet.
Well, if we do deny it. So Suzanne, would you amend that motion so that it simply says that we deny it?
I move that we deny the abatement as presented.
Second.
We just created a lot of legal costs for the town.
We have to, it's gonna come up again.
That's okay. It's what we need to do.
We need to resolve it officially.
This is the form to sign. All in favor? And the denial is at the bottom.
Second one.
The second one.
I hate to keep beating the dead horse, but the original abatement that you approved with the full acreage, are you comfortable with that? Do we need to readdress that?
I don't know how. Okay. I don't know how to do that. I don't, I don't know the answer to that question.
We approved it, so the only way they would have to send another...
I mean, you can, the meeting is adjourned, so I, but I don't know how to address it. It should have been addressed, calculated before we received it. I understand.
When would the next meeting of the Board of Assessors Review be?
They have, the board meets based on request. So if you chose to file an appeal, then the meeting would be scheduled according to everyone's schedules. So you would give me your schedule when you're available and if you have counsel when they're available. And then we'd work with the board, so. By statute, it needs to be done within 60 days of receiving the appeal. And you have 60 days to file an appeal. Obviously, we try to address it as quickly as we can.
Thanks, Carl. Do we want to give the look review?
I think Carly gave me the form for the appeal, so I...
The town will mail you formal notification of this decision as well.
So we will do that immediately. And we will be represented at that hearing by our town attorney.
By our attorney.
Not just, but by our attorney, Mr. James Day, and also by John Wood, the surveyor, who has surveyed all this land since 1993. And just as a trivial point, the amount of acreage in 42C is incorrect as determined by our surveyor. So, you know, it's a small amount, but, you know, it just shows that things weren't done very carefully.
Well, that'll, that will give us the opportunity to get some, something corrected. That can only work to the good of all. Okay, item number two on your assesses. Would you?
Margaret Rebecca Trautman requests to combine Tax Math I-06-Lot 53K and Tax Math I-06-Lot 53J.
Did you want to speak, Ron?
I've got some information for you guys to read first.
Yep.
This is the information that Ron put together.
Thank you.
So Ron, if they combine these two lots, and I know there's a timeline when you put something in tree growth. Does that reset it to zero? Do they maintain their status in tree growth?
They want to maintain the status in tree growth, yes.
But is that allowed? Wanting to and meaning it allowed, are they saying?
It isn't going to be changing any valuation or anything else.
By making it one official lot, it doesn't affect the timeline. I think we need to make sure...
Just for assessment purposes only, they're combining.
Well, but I want to ensure that that's the case. Because if we turn around and combine a parcel and it sets the clock to day one for tree growth, when you can't remove it out, I just want to ensure for the benefit of the landowners that they need to understand that they may be negatively affecting if it goes back, if it starts a new parcel at day one of tree growth versus where they currently are in each parcel. I don't know the answer to that. That's why, there's a date timeline when you put something in tree growth that you can't pull it back out with a negative tax consequence.
Well, no, if you wanted to pay the penalty, you could pull it out.
But for a timeline, so when we, my point is, when we combine these two parcels into one lot, does it take this lot and make it day one of tree growth? Or do they use the same calendar that they set?
The same thing. The same amount of forest is on both lots. But together, whether they're separate or not, everything's the same.
That's not what I asked. It's the timeline when you start it.
Wouldn't change that at all.
I just want to be sure that it's true.
Good question, yeah.
I know, I happen to know enough about real estate to understand what the problem could be here. And I just want before we, I want to make sure that when we combine the two parcels, that it doesn't establish a new tree growth lot that starts from day one of the calendar.
I don't think it would. No way it would.
They're in tree growth now?
They're both, but as separate lots.
But they're both in tree growth.
They're both... One tree growth plant.
Yes, they're on the tree growth.
One plant, I think that's the key. But there's only one plant.
Right. And the plant doesn't change.
The trees are the same.
They're the same trees that were there yesterday?
And they're going to be the same ones that are there tomorrow?
Has nothing to do with what's on the land. It's really protecting the landowner. You guys, I just wanted to raise a question.
Finding their burial way, that if they take one of these out of tree growth, what the consequences are.
Well, this is why we want to do this. Every year, there's a bill in the legislature saying that they want to take shore fundage out of tree growth. And you have to pay the full penalty if that happens. And we've got two separate lots that are currently assessed at $250,000, so half a million dollars. If they're combined, then that would drop their assessed value to $300,000 or so. So that would lower the penalty we'd have to pay if the legislature takes it out of tree growth. We have no intention of taking it out of tree growth. And since the town is going through reassessment, the likely going is the value that is going to go even higher. So probably be a million dollars, I don't know. So that's basically what we're worried about is the legislature might tell us we have to take it out even though we don't want to take it out. So by combining them, it reduces that penalty somewhat.
Are they both waterfront lots?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I approve, I move we approve the request of the landowners to combine the two lots on point. Second, that? All in favor?
And if you can just sign one of those copies, and then we can have, yeah, the copy is a little better.
How about if I start and move the other way?
And then we'll have the Totten sign it as well. And today is 5th of May. I know, I know, we should get it celebrated. Do you want to get a word while they're signing, huh?
No pressure.
No, just a question. This is just, it's for respect.
Yeah, it's true.
You tied your hands on it, didn't you? Any other public comment? David?
I respectfully ask the board to put a warrant on the lawns on the town property out to bid again. I believe it runs out in June, the contract. I don't think the cemeteries, Ian, or the town office lawns on the lawn here have been taken very well care of. The cemetery, the marriage mill, has not even had a screen cleaning yet, let alone the town office, which volunteers did. And I wish to thank Julie for organizing the cleanup at the town office on the landscaping. But I respectfully ask to put it out to bid again for the upcoming year.
Can we put them on the agenda for next time?
Yes.
May I ask a question that's, you might say this is so far off the agenda, we don't need to go there. In many places where imports are out in the United States and overseas, certain communities or certain groups within the community have volunteered to maintain a part of the road. You might have seen that. You know, this part of the road is maintained, not maintained, but cleaned up by the Kiwanis Club or the YMC or the whatever, or the XYZ Corporation. I'm finding that the state highway is getting more and more littered and more and more objectionable. It seems that every time I drive the Florence Road. Do you lovely ladies know anything about this? Can we do this? Do we have some options? Or is the state going to come in and clean up the mess? Because it's getting worse.
I have no idea. First off, are you familiar with the initiative that I mentioned?
Yeah.
Have you seen elsewhere? I don't know, I don't know if the town was bad, could do it, would do it, or whatever.
Actually, our, what do you call the, the... No, the guys on there. Oh, ATB writers, two sections of...
They wouldn't do the... They can't do Route 1.
Maybe we cannot do Route 1 because it's a state road, but that's the most objectionable, frankly.
Yeah. And I think my concern with state road, I prefer the state to do it because safety-wise, this is crazy out here, especially in heavy time.
Do we have any leverage over them? We can contact...
We suggest calling our state reps and sending them...
Yeah, and we could also contact DOT.
And Representative McCray has worked miracles with DOT directly in like the flooding on state roads, so she's a wonderful contact. And her information is on our website, and I can get that to you.
So you suggested the individual that's concerned, contact McCray herself or with the town?
We can certainly reach out.
I think doing both would be very, very helpful. I think for the citizens.
I can organize other citizens to do that, so thank you very much for letting me bring this up, which was probably inappropriate, but thanks.
No, I think it's a great... And it's true. It's terrible. I think in many, in many states, at least when I was living in South Dakota more than a decade ago now, what would happen was the section of highway would be adopted by a group and what they did was make an extra contribution to pay for the department of, the highway department to hire people to do that. People themselves did not go out and clean up the highway. And they just, the organization simply made the funds available because it's dangerous.
Well, it's, well, most often it's off the highway than a doctor's point. Very often, quite frankly, down south, you see people in orange outfits.
Right, it's very often, it's often a community service thing by people who are serving a county or local jail.
Oh, yeah. I lived in South for a long time. Just want to add.
Thank you for bringing it up because I think that's very important.
Just one question going forward. If 42C exists on paper, if not in reality, do we have to pay those taxes?
I think at this point in time, we're going to step back and we're going to let the process go forward, whatever you decide to do. I think right now it is so convoluted that we...
It needs to be resolved professionally and purposefully and then put to rest.
Okay, so we're not going to pay 42C's taxes at this point?
Well, it's been...
We can advise you on that. Again, we're going to, we're going to step back and let you proceed however you see fit at this time.
Yeah, you can call the town hall tomorrow, Jay, and we can look at that account and see where taxes are at. I believe all the taxes are paid in full at this time.
I thought we have because we have to do that before...
But yeah, in the filing.
We're going to pay for 42A, that's 42A, for it to go forward. We did not have to pay for 42C.
And I'll just be honest, I've heard so many different versions that I think it's time somebody who hasn't heard all those versions takes a look at it and tries to understand it and get the clear picture because...
Well, thank you for letting us speak.
Of course.
No problem.
I think it needs to be resolved, yes. It needs to be put to rest.
And I truly believe that the Board of Assessment Review will make a fair decision based on state statutes as best we can understand it. And that's the only way that we can get it done correctly. And I, and I think we all want to have it correct. And this has been in years for what, 16 years or something? That this is an error and nobody's caught it in all these years? Is that, is that going to be here? Well, because...
Potentially.
Because it came, it came to the forefront because of sale property. It had not been noticed, potentially. Potentially. Thank you. And those things happen. Any other public comment?
Second.
All in favor?